Good morning, everybody. It is November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five, and then day two of our November Board meeting, as I call back to order. Welcome to those in attendance and listening online. We have all ten board members seated at the table. And our agenda for today was approved yesterday, so we will queue it up right away here. Starting us off is General Counsel Scott Gordon for the Professional Practice Commission Recommendations Action. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Thank you to members of the Board, Commissioner Watson. Good morning, Mark. Sorry, nobody ever says good morning to the attorney, so I forgot to break it up a little bit. Well, Christmas came early a little this year, and so I'm going to play the role of Santa Claus, and I get to bring to you a bunch of teachers that got caught doing bad things. Just for fun, for what it's worth, I was looking at kind of a breakdown of all of the cases I've brought for you this month. All of these are by default, there's one voluntary surrender. But just in case anyone was curious, three of these individuals were either licensed or wanted to be licensed as an E-sub. One individual held a standard license, and some of them had been licensed as a professional, many of whom well over a decade. Statistically, overall, usually those teachers that get in the most trouble, that happens within the first three or four years of their careers. But this time, that's just not been the slate that I've brought to you. There are three different votes, just based on the nature of the cases. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that anyone has about any of the particulars. So.
Did you have a question, Betty? No? Okay. One question I have, just as a general, because in the list of revocations, I think it is, whichever one was the longest, I take it back, B, I think, in that list, you see different dates of when they would be able to reapply for a license?
Right.
And is that, so that's, I'm just curious about the differences and what carries what weight, if you wouldn't mind?
So, if you are convicted of a felony, you are not eligible to be licensed for at least a term of five years from the date of conviction. So if I indicated those dates, that was five years from those individual convictions. If there is a conviction for a misdemeanor, I think we put it as either one year or whenever you finish probation, you're eligible. Diversion, if you are on diversion for an offense, you are eligible once you are off diversion. And if there's no criminal prosecution at all, and it's just merely based on the misconduct, there's really not a minimum time limit by which you can reapply for a license.
Okay. And if there are no questions, then I would, we have three separate motions? Are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair.
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education deny the application in twenty-five PPC dash twenty-four.
Second? Everybody in favor? Ten-zero vote? Thank you. And on to part B.
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education revoke the licenses as requested in the following cases: twenty-five PPC dash eighteen, twenty-five PPC dash twenty-three, twenty-five PPC dash twenty, twenty-five PPC dash thirty-four, twenty-five PPC dash thirty-three, twenty-five PPC dash thirty-two, twenty-five PPC dash thirty-one, twenty-five PPC dash thirty, and twenty-five PPC dash twenty-five.
Okay, and a second. Jim? All in favor? Okay, ten-zero vote, that passes. I'm sorry, Connie, did you have?
It's okay.
I apologize, I did not see that. Feel free.
My question is, when they do reapply, do they go before a special board to be looked at?
They, if someone has had a license denied or revoked by this body, our practice has always been to file a complaint seeking denial when they apply again, so they would go back to the PPC and they would go back to the State Board.
Okay, thank you. And part C?
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education accept the voluntary surrender issued in twenty-five PPC dash seventeen and revoke the licensee's teaching license.
Okay, and a second. Melanie? All in favor? And a ten-zero vote. And please let the PPC know, we really do appreciate their work, as well as yours, sir. And I believe Mr. Ferguson had a comment.
I was going to try to embarrass Scott, because I don't have a chance, but since he said, "Good morning, Mark," now I have to turn this into a compliment and let, and let you, and let you know, because you wouldn't probably have any other way of knowing. But we went to the National Council of State Education Attorneys in Austin, and I just wanted to let the Board know, you hear secondhand, because Scott brings information to you from the group, the collective, and through the listserv and various things, but Scott Gordon was elected chair-elect of that executive board for the Nicosia Group for this upcoming year, so he'll take on more responsibilities and be planning. And so in two thousand and twenty-six, the next conference will be in Baltimore, usually at the same time, like, third week in October, the dates will con circulate, but just want to congratulate and embarrass Scott.
No embarrassment, but thank you, Mark, I appreciate that. So yes, NASB will, it hasn't been formally announced yet, but that's where NASB will be.
It just got formally announced, so there you go, as far as we're concerned. Thank you, sir, we appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, and making sure I get my, that's over here. Okay, up next, we will have Dr. Renee Nugent back, talking about the federal waiver.
Good morning. I've been putting a lot of this information in your Friday notes over the course of the last month or so, and so today I just want to get in front of you and talk through this waiver a little bit. All of what I'm going to talk about today really ties into the school improvement model across the state. And as you know, this model is what we're trying to create to be very continuous, intentional alignment of all of our systems. And so when you look at our current school improvement model, you all have really focused very intensely on KISA two-point-oh, rightfully so, over the last year and a half. But what you also are hearing from me over the last several months and moving forward is that districts are doing a lot around school improvement that maybe you aren't quite aware of. And those primary mechanisms of school improvement, along with KISA, is the at-risk accountability, which I believe when that rolls out in January, a lot of districts, I just shared this with the Commissioner, I think it's going to rock a lot of districts' worlds, because there's only thirteen in the pilot, and they aren't really sure what's going to be coming their way. So you've got school improvement through at-risk accountability, through KISA, all districts are required to complete the Legislative Needs Assessment every year. And then also, the federal government puts a lot of school improvement on those schools that are identified through title, graduation rates, et cetera. So that's our current state, and what our goal is with school improvement is to turn all of this into one ideal state. That would be a system that captures state and federal requirements with a single theory of action, and that's going to drive the improvement work and one integrated identification system, thus the rationale for the waiver. So this integrated model that we're working toward would combine a system with identification, plans, supports, and evaluation. In fact, the School Improvement Work Group is meeting today to really look at all the supports we have in place throughout the state for all four of those mechanisms. So even before I started officially on the job July one, as you know, with any transition, you're on Zooms and meeting regularly, and so I was on a lot of meetings with Ben and a few members from SETS, Joe Jewitt and Twyla, really looking at those schools who are federally identified, and how do we work to integrate those systems? And then about the time I started, we got the letter from the feds that said, "Hey, we'd really like to encourage states to apply for waivers. If you're doing something innovative that can really start to integrate these systems, we'd like you to apply." And it was almost like, "Yeah, this is great, we're going to apply." So the goal of our waiver truly is to work on that alignment of all of our systems, federal systems, title systems, and really align that to not only accreditation, but what we're doing with at-risk accountability to make it a true cohesive comprehension school improvement model. And I think I'm going to be on the books next month to really talk about more explicitly this vision I have for school improvement. The purpose is to really reduce duplication and confusion for districts. So if you are a district that's identified, you have a KISA plan, and then you have a title plan. And your title plan even has more requirements than your KISA plan. So when districts feel like we're doing more, we are asking them to do more indifferent. And what we're trying to do is say, "We don't want you to do more indifferent, we want you to be explicit in identifying one of your four fundamentals and tying that to your improvement plan with the feds, and working through that model cohesively, so it's not something separate that a school is doing from a district." This also should ensure improvement efforts remain focused on our Kansas model. Our waiver requested three things. We wanted to delay new identification for CSI, TSI, and ATS I schools. We want to delay exits of schools who are already identified, and I'll talk a little bit more about why. And then we wanted to extend the use of funds for all of these schools that were identified, that we're holding on to, as well as some that may have been identified, we want to work with them as well.
Right, so they would also still be able to benefit?
Correct.
It would leave them out if they're struggling?
Correct. We have a plan for them, so. The Department of Ed gave guidance to encourage states to pursue the waivers, especially in the event that they want to really remove the barriers for student achievement and better align federal programs with state priorities. What we found was many of our schools who would be eligible to exit also would be re-identified at another capacity. So essentially, what we've been doing for years is we've been providing these intensive supports to the bottom five percent of our schools. They may or may not come off, and then maybe be re-identified. That's not what we want in Kansas, right? We want to ensure school improvement continues. It doesn't have a school or a system fall back into the pit of identification. So what we've done so far is we've engaged with every school and district who is currently identified to communicate the purpose of this waiver, gave them opportunities to ask questions. We've identified schools will still be eligible to receive federal improvement funds, will continue to provide professional development and technical assistance through the KLN. And then schools meeting exit criteria, they can exit if they want, but we're saying, if you remain on, we're going to continue to provide some supports that we're hoping will be meaningful and different than what we've provided before, plus you'll still have access to those funds. And then schools that would have been identified, we're going to invite them to be part of a pilot of what we're doing with school improvement. So we're going to try some new interventions, some new supports, and make that a little more cohesive towards the KISA alignment system. Again, this gives us the opportunity to create one clear system for Kansas. I've been meeting with you, and we're looking at regs that bog down Kansas schools. So does school improvement when it's not all meant to intentionally be designed around one focused system. We've done that with KISA. We need to bring the other mechanisms onboard. This should reduce some administrative burden, especially in the area of reporting. It sure, it will ensure some consistent aligned supports focused on the four fundamentals, and it should strengthen the connection between federal, state, and local improvement efforts. And now I'll open it up for questions.
So Renee, how many, when we talk about this waiver, how many schools/districts are we really talking about?
Yep, I brought all of that.
Because we're not talking about the entire state here. We're talking about identified schools that have a criteria that the federal government, through Title I, puts out, that we have to identify?
That's correct. I'm going to get my exact numbers for you. There were approximately a hundred and forty-nine schools that thirteen KLN personnel worked with. And of those, seventeen schools could exit, twenty-three would have been newly identified, and ninety-five percent of those that were identified were identified at some point in a previous cohort as well.
Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm trying to figure out, the Dear Colleague letter was written on July twenty-ninth. You started, done July first. Did we get, because I've been going back and forth, I'm trying to think back, I want to say, four months ago, I kind of learned that we were doing like interim and mini-assessments. We were doing, because we have people, we have parents that opt out of the state assessment. So if they've opted out of the state assessment, I just want to make sure that they're being honored on many assessments, all these interim assessments that are going on, because there should be classroom instruction, and then however the teacher decides, quizzes, tests, whatever that's in real time that parents can see, whether that's brought home, if they're learning in a way that's paper and pencil, and then all of a sudden they're coming to a test, kind of like we learned yesterday, they're coming to, twice a year or tasks where they're now forced to go on and do something technology-based, that's a different way of thinking than what they've, what they've been taught in the classroom. So we've got this letter, did, were we brought, was it brought to the Board in either August or September or October regarding that we were going to, that we were going to do this? Or is that kind of what was going on behind when we started talking about mini-assessments?
Yeah, so this doesn't have anything to do with mini-assessments or anything assessment-related. This is all schools who have been identified because, and you're identified for three reasons. Your state assessment scores in either math or ELA are at the bottom five percent in the state, so that'd be a school-wide, or your graduation rate is at a particular level. So that's how you're identified for support. And so we've, and this is federally identified through the federal government, and so I believe that you got a copy, I think that the Board gets copies of the Dear John letters, but I'm not sure, but, or Dear Colleague letters, Dear John, Dear Colleague letters.
Yeah, those come directly to the Board.
Yeah, the Board gets these, and often the Board can apply for different waivers. This has nothing to do with a waiver for any kind of assessment. This is for, when a school gets identified, we have to provide supports to those schools in the area of school improvement.
So really, those schools that were, although we do it district-wide with KISA, right?
Right, so that's a great point. So a lot of, a lot of these are school-identified, and then some have so many schools that are identified, then their district also provides, gets provided support. But our theory is that we are working with systems in our state. Our schools should align to the system work. And when you're looking at how we've been doing with the federally identified schools, they're above and beyond. We want this to become an extension of that work.
Right. Well, on page two, it says that the federal government is wanting us to statewide assess it with a goal of scaling up the innovative assessment for statewide administrations such as competency-based assessments, and structurally embedded assessments, interim assessments, cumulative end-of-the-year assessments, and performance-based assessments that combine into an annual summative determination for a student. So that's a, that's a lot of assessing, yeah, but that's.
Yeah, I think that's a different Dear Colleague, so there were a couple of letters that were sent out. One did encourage some changes in the assessment. This one was specific to title and ESEA funding.
Well, there's just different, there's different avenues you can go to, I think, whereas we're looking at, and maybe this is the wrong letter.
Jake's going to hop in, because he might be.
When the, when the federal government sent the letter, they sent it saying, "We want to see things done differently." For example, and then they listed a bunch of things, and some of the things they were looking, because ESSA gives you option to test differently, states haven't really done it, so they just leaned in and said, "If that's one of the things you want to do, we're interested in hearing from you." So they just gave a list of things that they would consider in a waiver. That's how that.
So that was the thing I was concerned about in all those back and forth emails.
So yeah, so we're not asking for any changes in the assessment or with our waiver, we're just simply asking to change the delay of identification of schools so we can begin to support them differently, but not through assessment.
Yeah, because what it said on that press release, it said, "We're aligning, we're aligning," and when you look through the, this particular letter, it doesn't say alignment, aligning, align, or anything, so I was trying to figure out what we're aligning to.
That's our goal for the waiver, is that we can align our systems, so we're providing support, so hopefully it will impact assessment results better down the road. So we can say, "We want you to focus on these fundamentals, and we're going to give you support specific to that, which we hope will impact." Our theory of action is that it will then begin to impact assessment data for the long run, not just a temporary fix.
And it's still, and it's still being honored that the parents are opted out of these assessments?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, they would be honored by that.
A hundred percent.
So I'm going to just go back, because to understand a little history, so when the state board originated, there was only federal oversight at that time. And the federal oversight was, I'm going to get out of a special ed, in the title, was identifying of schools that in your state were at the bottom of the school performance of your state. There was additional money then that the federal government wanted to give to those schools with an improvement plan. Well, you have to remember, okay, then over the years, there was different federal accountability and state accountability. What changed for us in KISA, and then KISA two-point-oh, you said to us, and I alluded to this yesterday, "This is the one system we want to have happen." At the same time, and it wasn't going to happen that way, because the federal government was controlling these schools in a different system, different accountability model, different reporting model and everything, they came out and said, "We want to give authority back to the states in a variety of ways, Michelle." And we said, "Well, the state board said, 'Go do this on KISA,' so what if we align those schools to the KISA model instead of having two models?" To do that, we have to do a pause, as Renee said, in order to transfer that and get it all of aligned. So if we were ever to do anything on assessment, you've heard me talk before about maybe high school looking differently, Renee's going to maybe talk in the future, maybe look at something. That would require a state board then to go ask for, you know, an assessment change. Yeah, this is just aligning to what your priorities already are with a handful of schools.
Right. Debbie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I don't actually receive these letters straight from the Department of Education, so they might be in Friday notes, or sometimes I just find them on my own. But there was a second follow-up waiver letter, I could have sworn, that was issued in August, and I cannot find it to save my life, like, I can't find the second Dear Colleague letter from back in February either. And so are you familiar with that, the one that came out in August? Because basically, the July one said, "Hey, you know," and I believe it, I don't remember which title funds, but you have the option to get these waived, just an LEA could request it, the State Board could request it, it could come from either one. And then in August, another letter came out, and it said, "Never mind, we'll just waiver it." I could have sworn in my not-legal reading of that letter, and that's why I had actually asked for an agenda item for Mr. Gordon to go over all of these Dear Colleague letters, because that's the way I read it. And I just wanted to understand, how does this impact the local boards and the state board? So if you are familiar with that letter, maybe you could send it to me. It's from August. I'll look. Thanks.
Debbie, I might just add to this. Dear Colleague letters come out frequently from any administration, so I don't want to, right, so we're, this administration sends these out, too. Many of those don't, aren't, they're an interpretation of that administration around current policy.
Right.
In this case, it was about maybe returning some authority back to the states, but most Dear Colleagues, and if you want to think back to a previous administration, the Obama or the Biden administration issued Dear Colleagues letters around diversity and inclusion. This administration issued different Dear Colleague letters around, "This is our interpretation of law." Most Dear Colleague letters are that mode, they're not around what this goes on. So oftentimes, it is, "Here's our interpretation," and then Mark or Scott will say, "Well, we'll review that," but we don't necessarily act on any administration until we see case law, Mark can maybe speak to that, but we'd be, but still happy to try to share those with you, but most Dear Colleague letters are not around, as Michelle pointed out, changing something that's going on at the federal level.
Betty?
Thank you. Okay, this is kind of a overview, general question. With those low-performing schools, and many times, at least when I served on the local board, parents were aware of where they ranked, many of them were like, "Okay, let me see if I can move my child to a better school," because those seem to be synonymous. Do you expect that this, in a way, will quell a lot of the concerns that parents have? I mean, I'm just calling for speculation, quell the concern that they have about the performance of their school. From my perspective, when they have come in, you know, it's a low-performing, there's a lot of support that goes around those schools to help them increase or do better. I don't know how well it's publicized that. I, I don't know how well it's publicized that when they score low, there's a lot of support going in place, so maybe quelling the fear that your child would do better at a different school. That, that's, just kind of, if you could address that a little bit.
Sure. I, I don't know that I can speculate, but I will say that those schools will still remain. We still follow the same reporting procedures in terms of their report cards are published. But what I'm hoping will happen is that now we will align our supports a little more intentionally. You know, KLN does a great job, and they use evidence-based practices. But as we're diving in with the School Improvement Working Group, the State Department, TASN, our service centers are working so hard, but we're going this wide with our supports. We need to bring those in and focus. So I, I don't want to speculate, but I would hope that parents and families would feel better knowing that the supports are now going to be pretty intentional around those four fundamentals. I mean, how can a parent argue with improving reading, getting high-quality instruction in front of, of their children? So in that, in that regard, I feel pretty good about how families would, would feel about this change.
And, and just a quick follow-up, because one of the, the things that I've had a concern about is that there are a lot of efforts that aren't really communicated, where families understand, you know, "This is something we're taking seriously. We're really trying to convalesce around the problem, show improvement." Is there any way that this plan will be communicated to help families see that it's not a lost cause in that building?
That's, that's a great point. We have to see if we get the waiver accepted first and, and how to proceed. But I, I would hope, yes, that we could create some sort of a communication plan as to the intent and purpose of the waiver, because ultimately, we're gonna have to have the data to show that our supports and efforts are working.
I might add, this is, on the federal side, there's always gonna be the lowest 5%.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's a rank order. So you may not be, right? Your school may get off the five, but some school's gonna go on the 5%, because the federal government makes us identify the lowest 5% and lowest 10% of schools. So there's always going to be the lowest 5%.
Hopefully, those lows will be different lows.
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully, they are different lows, right? And the whole thing is going up.
So that we know that there's continuous improvement.
That's correct. And so in any state, the lowest 5% in Kansas may be not the lowest 5% in Montana, as an example, because, again, we hope that we, that we raise all of those boats. And this kind of goes to your comment, Betty, that there may, that may be, that school may be doing fairly well relative to other states, but in our state, they're at the bottom of, you know, of those schools. And, and we're just trying to help them move off, and then, of course, but there'll be replacements.
Right.
And that's not easily understood, because in KISA, it's not a win, win or lose. It's, everyone can obtain that mark.
Yes.
But the federal government makes the identification a little different.
Yeah. Debbie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I found it.
Oh.
August 21, 2025, but, and it, I thought it was a follow-up to the July, but I may be mistaken, because it says, in general, "The department recognizes that families of students attending a private school are still federal taxpayers. Congress also recognizes this, and accordingly enshrined in ESEA that students in private schools are eligible recipients of services similar to those provided, and they're public, whatever." I know you guys are familiar with that. But I found it, and I thought it was relevant to this, because back when I was studying these letters, I thought this was actually a follow-up to that. So I just wanted to make sure that the board, I don't, I don't know that I was sent this, but I found it before, and I found it now, and it's, I don't even know how to, it's, you know, www.ed.gov media document, Dear Colleague. And it is a Dear Colleague, so I just was glad to find it. Thanks.
Okay.
So I guess, just to conclude, when we have more information that we have, have or have not gotten the waiver, we will let you know.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we get to keep you, because you're next up, and we're going to do our first receiving of the regulations to start the amending or deleting of said regulations for our districts.
Yep, while he's getting the presentation up, I have Jake, Peyton, and Scott here. The four of us are the ones that have been working pretty diligently on these topics. And so we're gonna bring our first one to you. We're easing into this process, so we appreciate that you approved the process yesterday. The one we want to talk today is about mentor programs. And so we're gonna approach this with Article 41, the Mentor Teacher Program regs. The regs include definitions, general requirements, criteria for evaluating applications and approving mentor teacher programs, and criteria for determining exemplary teaching ability for qualification as a mentor teacher. We all know mentoring is important, right? We all 100% agree that that's important. So Article 41 outlines the requirements, and it basically says, "Districts seeking state grant funds must submit an application to the State Board of Education, and districts that receive funding must submit an annual evaluation report detailing program implementation and outcomes," right? I think yesterday, Michelle asked me, "Who reads all of these reports and documents that districts are required to submit?" And so, yes, we have someone at the State Department who would read through all of these documents, just like yesterday when you approved all of the professional development plans. Someone is reading through those, providing feedback, checking it off a list. Same with mentor teacher programs. We know they're important. But in recent years, the legislation said, "You have to have a mentor program, but we're not gonna fund it anymore." So the Article 41 Reg says, "Districts submit applications and evaluation reports tied to the receipt of state funds." There are no more state funds. So what we would like to put before you today is, because there aren't state funds tied to this, let's take away the requirement that districts have to submit, submit their applications and submit their evaluations, right? So the, the law has changed. We still want people to do mentor programs, but there's not funding tied to that. And the funding that was tied to that required application and annual evaluation. So again, we're not changing or deleting. In fact, in the event that funding occurred, then we would go back to saying, "Yep, you've gotta submit your applications and your evaluation." So this would reduce a burden for districts, because the law that is in effect ties this part, this requirement, to funding, and that funding is gone. So that's what we're putting before you today to consider. Are we on the right track with our thinking? Remember, is it, is it burdensome to districts? Does it affect student outcomes? Those three criteria that we look at for determining what Reg will be looking at.
Beryl?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Nugent and your team. So my question is, where is the accountability lever? Because if districts are not required to report that they have qualified mentor teachers who are providing that extremely valuable and sometime invaluable support to teachers new to the profession for at least a year, how will we know that process is occurring if they don't have to submit some type of reporting?
Yes, so, that's a great question. Again, it, it's an accountability piece on our part. Do we want to require that? And what is the leg to stand behind if there isn't funding tied to that? That's, that's the discussion and the question at hand.
Okay, so my question in the midst of that would be, isn't it part of a licensing issue on the mentorship? So this, to me, is separate in the whole funding piece that is through the state, but we still have a licensure piece that requires mentorship, because we talk about it with the Professional Standards Board all the time.
Correct.
So I think for licensing, there is-
There's still that accountability.
There is still accountability, because all of that has to happen and be proven in the midst of just that whole process. And we can double-check with Shane, but that's my, my understanding of sitting on the Professional Standards Board for three years, so.
I'm just having my team be ready to hop into, just so you know.
Yeah, there are still regulations under licensure that would require having a mentor teacher as part of the professional licensure.
Yeah.
This would just, because the funding isn't tied to it, just affect the reports that the district has to do.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I feel totally unprepared. I spent six hours preparing for this, and I had it, and now I can't find it. But I read over the regulation, and it already had written in there that basically it's subject to, if those funds are available. It doesn't say it that way. It just says, basically, golly, I wish I had it right in front of me. But I think we should just go back and read that regulation, because I think we might be solving a problem that isn't a problem. And then if the funding comes back, we'll have to solve it again, to put it back in.
So I, I think what we're just asking is not to change the regs, so then if it did come back in, the Reg is already here. What we're asking is, can we drop the requirement to have districts be required to report since there isn't the funding tied to it?
And what I'm saying is, I think it's written in there that they're not required to report if there's no funding. I just, as I was reading it, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That, yeah, that was what I guess I was trying to figure out, is I felt like a lot of reporting goes across the street, but what, where does that, where does that go? That, there's where the expense is, the department here, not us, things that we want to see, but things that maybe go across the street to the legislatures, and where does that, where, where does the pages and pages of reporting go there? That was my biggest question.
Yeah. I don't know where it goes across the street, but if we are to collect it, then we hold on to it.
Yes, yes.
Until they request it.
So some of the regulations we may be addressing, that's what I was thinking of, is, is where does that go? I want to know where that's going. Is it coming to us first, and then it goes over there? I just want to know where-
It does. We collect it.
We collect. But I mean, the, the ones that are asking for, what do they, what are they doing? I mean, are they allowed to, are we allowed to find out what they're doing with it, if they're even looking at it? Or is it making a difference, an impact on their, on their, how they legislate, or bills that they pass? That's, that's a big question, because we have some really old regulations that are still in there that I think we're gonna be reviewing, that maybe are just like endless paperwork and a lot of money we're spending in the department. And then where is it going? Is somebody actually looking at it across the street, evaluating it, sitting down and making, making some things that may actually benefit kids in, in Kansas and help with reading and things like that, rather than some of the other things they're working on? So, thanks.
And, and Michelle, when Frank gets back, and Frank and Gabby are in front of you next month, many of the things you are now mentioning aren't as much in regulation. They're attached to a state statute that says, "And there'll be an annual report given to the legislature by," I'm making up, "January 15th." And you're asking, "What happens to those?" And, and I think some of those would, would take a repeal in law that you could suggest, but you cannot control in this process. So I think we'll have to do both, right? Things that you want to suggest to the legislature, "Hey, why don't you review and get rid of some of these, because you add on every session and nothing ever leaves." But we do the same, too. We add on regulations, nothing may leave. So we're taking the process that you do control. Frank and Gabby will talk to the processes you could recommend to control, or to have an input.
So that would be, that would, that would go back to, as far as like reading, if you're, if you're taking a snapshot of that school, that district, and you've got a kid that came in from somewhere else, and maybe they moved from Texas, or they came in from homeschooling, and then you're gonna take a snapshot right then, and then you're gonna take a snapshot the next year. That's one year that you have to look at. So, so much of this information and reporting that we're getting is incomplete data, in my opinion. And then you have parents that opt out of things, so then you only have the data that's being collected on the kids or the parents willing to let you collect the data. So I think that needs to be stressed time and time again, that you're, you're looking at one snapshot, and you'd have to nail down and look at every single individual kid, because they're human beings at the end of this, right? So we need to figure out, we can't just penalize a school, or unaccredited a school, or based off of one sad snapshot. I just feel like we need to look at the bigger picture.
A hundred percent.
And that local district, that local teacher, that local parent, that local, they're gonna know in real time, and they should, they should be involved, engaged in the school, communicating with the school, "What is going on with my child? I'm not worried about all my neighbor's kid. I'm worried about what's going on with my kid, and how can I make improvements with my own child?" That should be the focus of every individual in the state of Kansas. I, I'll fill my time.
Agreed.
Mentoring is required, right?
It's a licensure.
Yes.
So it's, if you're not, this is going back to Merrell's concern, it's a KISA requirement. It's a compliance requirement, isn't it? So I'm thinking there is-
Following the regs is a requirement.
I'm thinking there is an accountability measure. And what you're requesting is that we take away an, an unnecessary accounting process, but it is covered as a compliance issue through KISA, so it seems to me to be a pretty simple thing.
Okay. Which was the point, I think.
Right. So I think that what I'm hoping that you will see is that it is not going to be easy to get through this process, because there are some things that we can very easily control and change, and some things we cannot. And some articles are very complex, and some are pretty simple. Some, we have laws and require, or requirements to, to fulfill that are unfunded mandates. So we just are gonna have to dive into this. It will be dipping our toes into the water, but I appreciate your thought into the process, Debbie. I appreciate that you looked into it. I think you're actually very right. We don't need to require this, because it's tied to funding. But I just want you to see the complexity with these articles. We will be bringing a different one back to you next week, and then asking for further discussion. May not require a vote, but, but we will review this again next month. Next month. Next month. Feels like next week.
I mean, if you want to be here next week, we might not be.
All right. Thanks so much.
Actually, I'm still, I'm up. I found it. I just wanted to re, I think in future, it would help me, because I like to actually see when somebody's referencing a law or a reg or whatever, to actually be able to read it.
Sure.
It helps me, because I'm a contract kind of minded gal. So 91-41-2B, "Each board receiving state funds for a mentor teacher program shall submit an annual evaluation report to the state board." So it, it is tied to receiving those funds. So if you're not receiving funds, I would say-
Don't need to submit?
Why do you have to submit?
Right.
That's why I was saying, we might not want to change the regulation now for something that we perceive as an issue.
Correct.
Because two boards from now, the regulation will be changed, but they won't know why we did it, or how we did it.
Correct. I think more so, we just want your understanding that we're not going to be needing this to be reported, and are you okay with that?
Right.
So.
And Debbie, the Reg was within our board packet.
It's, it's nice up here though, because I had to go and find it, and it wasn't on here.
Sure, I'll put it, we'll put it on the PowerPoint moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
And so you don't have your packet on your computer again?
It's right here, but I don't read it. Oh, you're right, it's right there. I didn't see it. I read it before, but I didn't see it.
Okay, we're gonna take a quick 10-minute break, and then we're going to have a wonderful presentation with our JAGK. So let's take 10 minutes, and we'll come back at 9:55. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are back after our break. And next on our agenda, we have the joy of getting to have before us jobs for America's graduates or JAG-K for Kansas. And we're going to start with Bev Mortimer then?
And as Bev comes up to the podium, if you remember yesterday in our, my discussion with you in the commissioner's report around graduation, talked about our partnership with JAG. And I know they'll speak more, more about this, but they've been very instrumental in trying to help us raise graduation rates and not just the graduation rates, but the success of the kids once they graduate. And, and I, we probably meet, what, two or three times a year on topics. They really are doing great work and so we're really proud that they're here today.
Yay, welcome.
Well, thank you very much. Yes, I'm Bev Mortimer, Chief Innovation Officer for JAG-K. Brought with me three students that I know that they are the important people you want to hear from, but also behind them are some very supportive adults that I don't know that we have time to get to. But if we do, and you can certainly, you're certainly welcome to ask them any questions, but behind them, and if they would stand up, Raina Tomlinson has been a specialist at Russell High School, but is moving into our Director of Learning Experiences. Big project about interns, paid internships for students in the Ogalala Commons. And so if you want to know about that, visit with her. Cynthia, Cynthia Garner is the, a program director in KCK, but she also was a specialist at Wyandotte and has been with the organization many years. So she's got a lot of expertise in a lot of areas. Michael Munoz is a program director for the Topeka District, was also a specialist, I believe, at Highland Park. Yes, got it? And then you will hear from Chuck Knapp in just a little bit. And then last but not least certainly is Dr. Randy Randolph, who is our Director of Programs for JAG-K and a retired, I think Jim is the one who said, the failed retirees. Myself and, and Rand, Dr. Randolph, we are failed retirees from education and came back for more important work. So with that, very quickly, I just want to give you a little bit of an overview. I think you're all familiar with us and what we do. I sent you a couple of handouts. But we, we're focused on successful futures of all of our students, all students in the state of Kansas. Been here since 2013. We are an elective course on the master schedule. We have 93, you can see the numbers, but we, they're multi-year. And I was just telling someone that I believe that multi-year piece is one of our strongest factors of success where students have a chance to get to know their career specialists and have them all through high school. They keep returning to the same specialist or even middle school. And I believe, I don't know if Annalysia will tell you, I think she is our.
Seven? Seven years in JAG-K? Were you in middle school? Five?
She started in eighth grade and then came on to high school. Seventeen middle school programs. We have four alternative programs, seven Success Academy programs. Four of those are focused on youth in foster care across the state and the other three are at the Kansas Juvenile Correctional Complex. We serve over 6,000 students starting in sixth grade, 85 schools, 54 districts, 43 counties, 2024 graduation rate, 99%. And 90% of those students are engaged in full-time, post-secondary, military, or employment within that 12 months of their graduation from high school. The right button. So we have, people sometimes say, what is JAG-K again? What does that mean? Well, think of it as a career development model and a comprehensive career development model that is evidence-based. These are the major components. The student-led career association, number three, is the three people behind me that you're going to hear from in just a little bit. They are elected regional and state officers. And this is an area where students really take the lead on what happens in their career association with leadership, career development, social and civic awareness, and I've missed one.
Did you catch it?
They're all kind of nervous. There are five pillars, but the employer engagement, work-based learning, I know you got a handout about that. We do follow up with these students a year after their high school graduation, providing services and assistance that they might need during that time to make sure they make that transition from high school on to whatever is next for them. We have some other embedded evidence-based strategies like family engagement, the multi-year piece and other things. And then we do have a lot of data and I, you know, showed you a little bit, but we have a lot of that to go with what we do. The one I left, number one, is the one I just want to talk a little bit about. We are in a pilot right now, piloting, credentialing in our competency areas. We've always been competency-based, but the pilot takes it one step further. How do we know our students gained, earned, learned the skills that we are working on that we've taught through our competencies? And so that's where you're going to see more from us about, from competency to the credential. And so just a quick competency-based learning is they prove their skills. It doesn't matter how much time it takes them necessarily because we know that students all learn at different rates. It also has to be specific skills that they provide evidence of their learning. So we're not off on some sailing a different direction than State Department of Education. This is your diagram and I'll tell you where we fit, right in the middle. Now I had to draw some arrows because that little piece in the middle is the fine print at the bottom of the page that says workplace skills, applied knowledge, effective relationships are the heart of all employability skills. We do that. Our competencies and the skills that students learn are that middle piece that allow them to go out into the direction, any direction they want to go. And we work on that within our classes with exploring those, where do you want to go? What do you want to do? And we're that middle foundation piece that all students need. And so that you know, our model is also aligned with the national model and those career-ready practices in the middle, the model and the competencies we're using are aligned to the career-ready practices in the national model. So that competency to credential, this is just, you'll have a quiz later at the end of the 30-minute, no. The, it's, it's one area. It is job and career-ready. This is a competent, the competency is, is the job and career-ready credential. That's not the competency. That's the credential. Each of those five other icons up there are the competencies. So the competency students will have to demonstrate to earn this credential are communication, job attainment, professionalism, self-management, and work ethic. The skills that are listed under those five categories are the skills they have to demonstrate evidence of learning. It is up to the student to demonstrate and then it is graded by our trained people who will say, yes, you've demonstrated the skill or not yet, go back and rework it. So in the pilot that I mentioned, we're doing this credential area, pathway navigation and financial literacy in our Wichita and Augusta programs right now with the plan to roll this out to the entire state in our JAG-K program starting next year. There are five other credential areas like digital literacy, personal branding, leadership, and there are others that will follow, but we started with the heart of what we do, which is the career development piece. So that is, well, that evidence of learning, once they have it, they will earn digital badges that when you click on them, you, it, it's, it will take you to the metadata that will explain the credential, how it's verified, what skills that student has. So we're really taking our competency base with new and updated competencies and making sure our students can demonstrate the skills that they have learned those and then they're able to articulate to employers, scholarship committees, anybody interested, they can articulate the skills that they have after they have earned their credentials or their badges. So I just wanted to plant that seed. You may hear more about that later on. And as I said, the important piece are the students standing behind me. I'm going to let them go one after another, but again, they are elected officers from their regions. Two of them are also state officers. Two of them are also state officers. Are all three of you state officers too? Okay, and so first up, Erin Foster, who is Region Two Vice President from Topeka West High School.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for having me. Sorry, I'm a little stuffy. It's cold outside. I'm just going to get started by telling you guys a little bit about myself. But through my four years, I've been pushing myself to be the best version of myself and the best of my peers. I've been trying hard. But starting my freshman year, I've been taking multiple events and dual-credit courses to prepare for college, and ever since, I've had the hunger to excel myself. My drive continued through high school, and I've taken every advanced class that I've been offered, not only earning an A, but also applying that knowledge to my life. I try my hardest to push myself in school, not because my parents forced me to, but because they weren't given the same chance I have. In my earlier years, I was a target at school. I couldn't go a day without being bullied. This treatment made it hard for me to speak. For the greater part of elementary school and all of middle school, I stayed styling. I didn't talk. It was like at school, and then sometimes I didn't talk at home either. I just didn't have anything to say. I realized my confidence was preventing me from reaching my full potential, but I was tired of getting bullied. After what felt like forever, middle school had finally ended, and it was time for high school. I didn't expect high school to be any different, and it wasn't, not until JAG found me. I refused to take French class because I thought it would be too hard, so I went to my counselor and I was like, "I need a new course." And then that's when she told me I could join JAG-K. JAG-K as a class taught me so much my freshman year, but most importantly, I learned how to speak in front of my class. With this new skill, I regained my voice by speaking up more, and my JAG specialist, Mr. Parker, saw potential in me to be a leader. He motivated me to run for a Vice President role in my school program, and I'll never forget the amazing feeling of putting myself out there and having people believe in me. I ran for the same position my sophomore year and enjoyed it even more. At the end of my sophomore year, I realized I wanted to speak up more and meet more people, but I didn't know how. Later, that's when I found out I could run to become a regional officer. Getting the opportunity to speak to my whole region felt like relief. My voice was finally important. Currently, I'm the Region Two Vice President. This is my fourth year in JAG-K program and my second year as a regional officer. My life has been changed in many ways since joining the program. Most importantly, JAG has built my public speaking skills so I can speak to you guys today. JAG has also improved my neck working skills and introduced me to many other leaders who have helped me push myself to be a better leader. One of the most impactful experiences JAG-K gave me would be our State Leadership Development Conference at the Eisenhower Museum. That day, I learned there's many ways to leave an impact on the world, and I want to leave my own one day. Sometimes I'm, oh, not sometimes, something, sorry. Something I personally struggle with is the feeling that I'm missing out or not applying myself to anything. But after discovering JAG-K, I've been at peace knowing I'm helping contribute to something with such a greater impact. Hopefully, JAG-K can impact the lives of future students as it has for me. After high school, I'm intending UMKC to major in nursing and pursue my dream career as a hospice nurse. Overall, I want to spend my life after high school being there for people when they're at their lowest. Thank you for having me today. Thank you.
The first time I competed in a JAG speech event, I didn't go in thinking that I'd win. I just wanted to prove to myself that my voice mattered. Fast forward a few years, and that voice has carried me to nationals and other important events like being here today. Hi, I'm Annalysia Kinnell, a senior at Shawnee Mission North High School in Overland Park, Kansas, and I'm so excited to be here today. I first joined JAG in eighth grade, so I've been in the program for almost over four years. And what has made me stay? Well, when I first joined, I had no interest in it at all. I mean, none. But my brother was in the program, and he loved it, so he told me to give it a chance. And I did. Little did I know that that chance I would take would turn into something bigger than I could ever imagine. When it came time for CDC, the Career Development Conference, I was given a list of options and events that I could compete in, one of them being prepared speaking. Now, I should probably mention in middle school, I was kind of shy and would never consider doing prepared speaking in a competition. But once again, my brother told me to give it a chance, and so I did. Now, when I competed eighth grade year, I did horrible, and I thought he was crazy. But somehow, me doing horrible made me want to keep going and push harder. Freshman year, fourth place at the state level. Sophomore year, top 10 at the national level. Junior year, top 10 at the national level. And well, I haven't gotten to compete my senior year yet, but I'm hoping for the best. The best may not be winning top 10 at national again, but maybe it's having peace, knowing that I found something I love doing and a passion I'll have for the rest of my life. Once I realized I could do prepared speaking, I wanted to use my voice for other important things, like being regional president. So I ran to be my regional president, and I got it, and I also got state vice president, which has unlocked so many doors for me and given me so many great opportunities. I got to meet Governor Laura Kelly. I was the first person to be asked to say a speech to our career specialists at their annual state training. I get to go to Washington DC in a few weeks to gain more leadership skills, and hey, I'm here talking to the State Board of Education. So it's given me so many great opportunities. Now, all of these big things are important, but you never realize how important the little things are. Inside the JAG classroom, I've learned how to build a resume, how to get a good credit score, how to save money, and there are things that you may think are obvious, but you don't really always think of right away, which is so cool that we get to learn. I'm so thankful for JAG and all the opportunities that I've gotten to get just being an officer or just being in the classroom. It's truly amazing, and it's kind of crazy to think that if I never took that chance in eighth grade, that none of this would have ever happened. So if I have anything to say to you, it's to take that chance, because you never know. You could find your voice in the process of it. Thank you so much for having me here today. I hope you all have a great day.
Good morning. My name is Macy Patterson. I'm from Russell High School in Russell, Kansas, and today I'm going to be talking a little bit about my internship experience that JAG has brought me. So a little bit of a backstory about me. I have always been a very great student. I've loved learning. I've loved just learning new things every day, but nobody really talks about the students who have everything figured out their freshman year. It's a little bit lonely because all your friends are still figuring out what they want to do, and they're exploring, and then you have that one student who's like, "I know what I want to do," and you don't really fit in anywhere. So my first year in JAG-K was my sophomore year. So freshman year was a little bit different for me because I still knew what I wanted to do, but I had no idea how to get there. So I joined JAG-K my sophomore year because one of my friends, Cambria, was in the program, and she encouraged me to join the program and give it a chance. And I joined it, and at the time, Ms. T was our cheer coach, so she also influenced that a little bit. She did some outside recruiting. And I, at first, I just loved the class because I finally had the chance to figure out how I wanted to get to my career, which at the time was law enforcement. I didn't really know like what went into that, if I needed a college degree or what kind of training I would need one day. And through that, we did a few career prep projects, which mapped out my journey a little bit. And my favorite one was the very first one I ever did. We made a poster board, and there was a road that you made, and every stop that you made was a step that you needed to make to get to your career. And that really solidified what I needed to do to get there, even if my steps ended up changing throughout high school. Fast forward to second semester, Ms. T asked me if I would like to be the Secretary of our local program. I wasn't originally interested in being an officer by any means. I was kind of standoffish, but I had a big personality and I had very good leadership skills, so they didn't really mix well, but she saw that potential in me, and I'm really glad that she asked me to do that one day because here I am as Region One President now, talking to you guys. So I became secretary, and then I competed at Career Development Conference, and the first year, I did the project-based learning project. And we went over the project we did that year, and we competed, and that same day, I ran for a regional office. And I got elected as the Region One Parliamentarian as going into my junior, going into my junior year, yes. And through that, I went to State CDC after, and I met a whole bunch of people, and I realized that how important my voice was as a student in JAG-K, because you have your specialists who guide you and lead you on the way. But one thing we always say at Russell is it's student voice, student choice. We learn what we want to learn, and it takes your voice to tell them what they want to learn. We build our program and we build what we want to do. And that same thing happened when a former student of mine, Hannah Gideon, said, "Ms. T, I want an internship." Ms. T said, "Okay, what are you going to do about it?" So that summer, she found a business called Ogalala Commons, and they are a business that's focused on the producing of the elements you need in rural communities and making sure that you know the key assets that you need to keep those communities alive. So one thing they do with that is they provide paid internships throughout your community with business partners. So after I learned about this experience from Hannah, I had the chance to do that internship for the first time my junior summer. I applied, and I got the position, and that May, I went to a little town in Channing, Texas, and there was a little resort called Talon Point, and this is where we did our leadership kind of conference. And they tell you everything you need to know about your internship, what the requirements are, and what kind of leadership things you can do to work with different generations and have that generational bond, because the way that I think is probably very different than how you guys think. We have a little bit of a different joking scheme. And so one of the biggest things I learned was how to talk to you guys in a professional way, but still have a good relationship. And so after we went to the retreat in Channing, Texas, you come back and you perform your 100 hours of your internship experience. Along with that, you do 10 hours of community service, and then you do three blog posts, which are just talking about who you are is your first one. Your second one is talking about your 12 community assets, and it talks about the things that you need in your community. So in that one, we talked about what in our community aligned with those. So it's like water production and food shed and education. So with that one, you go out to your community and you find what your examples of that are in your own community. And your last one goes about an overview of your internship and what community service project you did. So the first year, we did a really cool one where we rebuilt our library in Russell High School, and that was a big one for us because we didn't have one due to water damage the year before. And so that's what really started us off by getting community involvement. And I think that was what really grew our program to where it is today in Russell, because in Russell, it's about 5,000 people, so everybody pretty much knows everybody, and it's a small school, and you really can't do much without that community support. Without the community support, it kind of just crumbles, and you're just unnoticed. So these internships have really given us that ability to have that community involvement and community relationships, which is really important, especially for a kid like me who doesn't have the best family life. I met the people in my community who I could fall back on if I ever needed anything. So that was a huge one for me. I did my first and second internship at the Russell Police Department, and I learned that like Russell is 100% a place that I would want to come back to after I spread my wings and get my education. And I think it's so important that we offer that ability for students, because in rural communities like Russell, they're so eager to get out because they only know what's in their community. And these internships allow the students to see what opportunities they have in their community and what different kind of things you can bring to your own community. And it kind of seals the fact that there's nothing for me here. There really is. It's just hiding in the shadows, and you have to dig for it a little bit. But doing that digging was definitely the best thing that helped me with that, and I created those relationships with the people in my community, and I have so many people who are on my side supporting me now, and it's like I have a huge family. And I wouldn't have had that experience without JAG, for sure. JAG was originally what gave me this, and then JAG also gave me another family. So giving me all these experiences and families has really like supported me and made me the confident person I am and been able to talk to you guys about what we can do for students across the state, because one day, we hope to make sure that every student has the opportunity to impact their community and make great community relationships with one another. So thank you for your time.
Betty, did you want to make a comment or have a question?
If you have a question, I want to open to question. We have a bonus for you today. Come on. Raya was, Raya was an elementary student at Concordia when I was there as an administrator and superintendent. After I left, she went ahead, she in, were you seventh grade? So she's a six-year JAG-K student from Concordia. Raya graduated a few years ago, just recently got her college degree from Kansas Wesleyan. She is now employed by JAG-K as a communications specialist. Also on her resume, Raya was the very first ever national, JAG national president. And so I don't, I apologize, I had to send the PowerPoint in before I knew she would be here, so I don't have a slide for her. But she is here in person, and you are certainly welcome to ask her questions as well as the other students. I know Chuck is going to close us out, but we want to make sure you have time. But I did want to introduce Raya, who's a very special student to all of us, who is now one of our employees. So.
We'll see. Betty, do you want to go ahead?
Okay. First of all, thank you all so much. I mean, it's really inspiring hearing from each one of you, and I congratulate you on the growth that you have made. Obviously, we know that for all students, one size does not fit all. So you present an alternative to just those students that are struggling. But to our first speaker, you mentioned something that resonated with me, and I'm hoping the board heard it as well, when you talked about being bullied and how you did not have a voice as a result of that. And that is something from a perspective of when we look at obstacles that are in the way for education, that we understand and treat bullying as real. You brought that out so well. So my question to you, is that an area that you would look at in terms of encouraging others or reaching others? I'm very concerned because there are a lot of students, I feel, that fail to be as successful as they could be because of being intimidated, because of being bullied. They try to hide and don't have that connection, and I'm glad you found that. Is that in your purview of something that you would like to accomplish as well?
Yes, it is. I feel like being bullied at school, it really suppresses your desire to apply yourself, honestly. Like you, you don't want to do anything. You don't want to work hard because you're scared that like someone's going to make fun of you, or someone's going to make it hard for you, even, or you're scared your teacher's not going to do anything. So I do, I do want to encourage more people to put themselves out there and not listen when people do stuff like that.
I'm glad to hear that, and thank you. And I would encourage that when you have the opportunity, because that's an area that's so critical, and you're able to reach other students to let them know that there's an alternative way that's available to them. I'm so glad that each one of you have found your voice and that you are using it in such a wonderful manner. So thank you again for being with us today.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for the time. I know you have an executive session, so I will keep you on time. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here. The reason JAG-K exists is we want all students to have successful futures, and these are three stories of thousands. All of our students are dealing with stuff. We're all dealing with stuff, and it's not the stuff that defines you, it's how you deal with the stuff that defines you. And I think that's one of the important parts of JAG-K and why every student in this state could benefit from being a part of our program. Today, we want to talk about someone who's been a strong advocate. We appreciate the support that the board has given us. There have been several board members since we started in 2013, but there's been one Education Commissioner, and he has been a stalwart champion, not only of JAG-K, but of education. And I would say even more important of students, because as I look at your wall, they come first, and I've never doubted that that was the case with Dr. Watson. And so today, we don't know how much longer he's going to be here, there's a search, but we wanted to recognize his support of JAG-K. And so Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind if I... And so, Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind if I could ask Dr. Watson to join me? And, and I'll, I'll read this as he's coming up. This is the JAG K Education Champion Award. In deep appreciation for your extraordinary leadership, steadfast partnership, and enduring commitment to the students of Kansas and your unwavering support of JAG K, we present this to Dr. Randy Watson with gratitude and admiration from the JAG K Board of Directors, staff, and our students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I do think we might have another comment because I missed it, I'm sorry.
Good, if, if you don't mind, I just wanted to, um, one, I hope that you're able to take your bullying experience and grow your heart about 50,000 times bigger. Because I'm, and I'll just share with the Board, I'm coming up on the anniversary of my son's death. So hospice nurses are very near and dear to my heart. And you have a big road ahead of you. And I applaud you for what you're doing and what you're willing to put yourself through. Also, um, Macy, I love how you said that, uh, that, uh, going out with JAG K gave you the opportunity to come back home and find the value there. I just love that because the small towns lose their kids for that very reason. And then one of you said you were a regional parliamentarian. So, okay, you had my attention, you had my heart. Because I feel like there is such a pressure in the school system right now to lose that art. And I am just so thankful that you guys are maintaining it. I learned of another group, um, student group that just left it. And I hope you don't. So, thank you for your presentation.
Yes, thank you so much. We appreciate each, so much of what JAG K does. And I know we have a presence in Hayes, where I live, and across my district, Minneapolis, I know has one, like, and Russell, um, right there, close to home. So, just, I know this Board over the years has always supported this, as Chuck said, and our Commissioner. But it is obviously one of those programs that works so very well. And you obviously displayed that very well. So, thank you. Thank you for taking the time to be here with us. Appreciate all the adults who came along to tag along with you.
They're the real reason we're here.
That's right. Do you guys want to take a picture real quick? Would that be okay? Okay, we are back from break. And we are going to go from here to our committee reports, chair report, Board travel requests, future agenda items. We'll run through those as quickly as possible. And then have to go into our executive session regarding the Commissioner's search firm. So, we will start with committee reports. Um, I think if you guys don't mind, we're just going to run around the table here. So Jim, would you mind starting? I don't know if you've had anything in between. I know you have something next week, but I don't know if you've had.
We had a regional meeting, uh, that, that will be reported to the, to the regular meeting later next week. So, I'll have something next month.
Okay, okay. Um, Michelle, you have several things you're involved in. Please feel free.
Um, so they're wrapping up, uh, with School for the Deaf, with their independent, um, it's an outside because they have dorms there. So, it's, uh, they do it, uh, and then another accreditation system besides KISA. Because they, um, they don't just end at the day at 3:00 in the afternoon. They have kids there that are, I mean, activities and things because they're, they have dorms there and they're, uh, they're there 24/7, 24 hours a day. So, um, that's wrapping up this week. It looks like, um, they'll, uh, they'll finish their report and give that back to Luann so she can report back to the Board in about four to six weeks, I think, with the total, with the total, like any recommendations they give. But it looks like they'll probably, um.
So, this is their other accreditation piece that they have to do? Okay.
That's great. So, the, the people that I met this week, the team that came in, they were from Florida, Oregon, um, Washington, and, um, I believe Tennessee maybe, or Oklahoma was another. And they're, they're, they're coming from other schools from the deaf. So, they're given that perspective.
Right, the peer review part of that.
That's, that's correct. Um, and then as far as the task force, um, that, that we're on, that wrapped up last Thursday evening. Um, and so, we won't be having our meeting on the 20th. That, that was our last meeting.
Okay.
And we did get to hear, um, from, from those who are deaf. We got to hear that piece at the, at the very end. And I felt like that was a piece that was missing. Uh, it was a link that was missing, uh, throughout the whole, all the meetings. And that, that, that was a very important component to that. Um, to hearing from the, those who learn, who are deaf and who learn differently than those who are hearing. So, we got to hear that piece. And then there were probably, all in all, 28 recommendations that they want to bring before the Board. But we're going to condense those and umbrella some of those because a lot of them crossed over.
Okay.
I think the biggest thing is to have some type of advisory or some type of continue that site council and hear from those, um, parents, uh, admin, teachers, uh, those in the community. And, um, and I'm possibly even adding in some legislators. Or some people that, because legis, they get their funding from legislation.
Awesome, okay. Anything on the negotiations?
Oh, negotiations is the 18th is our, we have a meeting next week. On the 18th with Mark and, and the team. And, um, and we'll, I think that's, what is it? Anticipated about two hours or three hours. And we're hoping that that's our final meeting.
Hoping that'll be the end?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, and then, did you have a KISA meeting? Same as? Okay, okay, already. Betty, anything in your world? Nope, I have nothing, thank you. Oh, easy peasy for you. Um, Connie, I think you went to the ribbon cutting for the School for the Blind, yes?
Yes, I went to the, uh, the gymnasium with.
Maybe rededicated.
Rededicated. And it's marvelous, Jim, the floor, the floor is just really special. And it was kind of nice to see, if you felt the floor, they have tapes on there that the kids could feel with their feet. I didn't know that they could do that, but.
Okay.
Where, where they're in the bounds and stuff. And then I learned about a new game that came in World War II. And what was the name of that game? It was a ball game where they throw balls.
Goal ball.
Yeah, and I thought, wow, I'd never heard of that. So, I'm going to be looking that up on the internet and learn about it.
Okay.
Because they do play that and they got an award at the school for that.
Nice, nice, okay. Nice, nice, okay. Danny, I don't think you, we, we're just glad you're here. Beryl, anything you want to add on the task force meetings that you've been a part of?
No, Michelle really covered it well. And I know that we also had you taking excellent notes. And so I think between Melody and Michelle, Melanie and Michelle, we're going to be in good shape for moving forward. It was a great experience though. I'm glad that I was able to be part of the task force. I learned a lot. Learned a lot about the culture, the community, and where people's hearts are.
Okay, anything you want to highlight in that learning to help the rest of the board?
Yes, that they are a very protective community. And I think as we continue our work with them, and hopefully we'll be able to do that in some fashion, that will, personally, then I will gain a clearer understanding of how that system works in many unique ways. I came with my school principal administrative center focus and found out so much of that needed to be parked and left in the car. And when I walked in, I needed to open my mind to see how different systems function. In fact, there was one evening where they had the fire alarm go off and we were all outside. And I noticed all the conversations that were going on in a language that I could not understand. And so that just really helped me see, if you're going to try to represent the community, you really need to learn the community.
That's good.
That may be my year 73 goal to learn ASL.
There you go.
Thank you for that experience.
Okay. And Debbie, thankfully, you were able to attend the teacher vacancy supply meeting. I know I was not, so I'd love to hear.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, because I was sitting here thinking, oh, I don't have a report. And I was like, oh, wait, she wasn't there. Okay, so I went back to my notes. Of course, this was my first meeting, so I'm not going to do Shane. He, he comes back and tells us the relevant stuff that they need from us, doesn't he? From these, I can tell you kind of what we covered. Some definitions, we talked a lot about special needs as far as student teaching advocating for educators to join professional standards board. The professional standards board changes that by May 1, 2026 must report on review special ed licensure and student teaching regulations. They have kind of a timeline going for these goals. They said invites are being sent five October to one November, four November to 30 November are their meetings, and then one December to 17 April are they're finalizing the recommendations. So those are the notes I took. It was a lot of Greek for me.
Okay.
So if it makes sense to anybody else out there.
Takes a while to get incorporated, yes. Yeah, okay, thank you, Dennis.
Well, I did, I was on Zoom with the opioid and prescription committee, which has a quarterly board meeting. And I feel somewhat disconnected because, I mean, a lot of these people, they work full time in, in community health and, and they're really, you know, in the know about what is, what's being, what's happening in communities and rural areas and stuff that families are suffering from. And so I, I was happy to hear the focus was pretty much on let's, let's find out from families what they, what their needs are and, and work with families and try to heal families that way and not just from a professional standpoint. So that, I, I was happy about that. Then last week was the quarterly ag in the classroom board meeting. And just good to know that they've had some good, successful fundraising. And so I, financially, they're pretty healthy. And just a lot of good coordination across the state where they're meeting schools where, you know, where schools want to start a program or something, they're there to help. So it's, you know, a nonprofit that is helping and not, not necessarily directed by K-State, but they're on the K-State campus.
Right.
And so it's just a good organization I'm glad I'm part of. We're going to talk about NASB later.
No, you go ahead, Sherri.
Well, I, I just since the mic and Melanie and you were there too. I just was encouraged by, I really enjoyed, they had several panel sessions where they had people that were up front and, and were in discussion. I took away from there that it's, everyone is struggling with a lot of the same things. And what happens in the classroom is so important. And what content is being used. And so I think that states are, well, we've had a couple of Zooms. I think there's been three of them on high quality material. Yeah, and I've been part of those two, two of the three. And it's been interesting to hear other people talk about that. I was in two different breakouts, one from Indiana and one from Georgia. And the Indiana people, they, they're sort of, might say pioneers in fixing. And we've, we've had discussions about eliminating, eliminating and really evaluating what we're doing. And our KISA model is to really focus on the things that two or three, you know, the four fundamentals. And that's kind of where they're at. And they're willing to take things. And if they have a history of something not working and being sort of out of step with what their, their, their vision is for the future, they just, they just get rid of it, take it off the table. So I was glad to hear that, you know, we're maybe kind of in step with that. So Georgia has a special task force for their rural districts. And I thought about, you know, our struggle with small districts that are disconnected in the western part of the state from what happens in, in the larger metro areas here in the east. And so Georgia really has a, an effective kind of task force for rural districts. And I thought that's something maybe we ought to look into as far as getting, you know, if there's something that they can help us have a little more vision for these smaller districts that are struggling, so. It was, it was very much worth my time to be there. Enjoyed it. My, my wife actually was able to go and spend some time. We had some good barbecue as we left town, so.
Melanie.
Thank you. The policy committee met yesterday. I think that we are going to try to schedule, because of scheduling conflicts, I would say, over the last several months, we're not meeting as often as I would like. And so I'm hoping that we can squeeze a meeting in sometime between now and our January meeting. Whether we have to do that on Zoom or what have you, we'll figure that out. I too went to the NASB conference. I could talk all day about all the things that we learned at NASB. I just want to encourage the board to engage in those opportunities, the Zoom calls. You, you never know who you're going to meet on one of those Zooms. You never know which state is going to drop in. And the conversations are wide ranging. You get all kinds of different perspectives. And so I just appreciate being able to be in the room with other states and hear what they're doing. So thank you, Dennis, for, for that recap. And then, let's see. Oh, we have a, so Dennis and I both serve on the ESEA Advisory Council. That's another meeting that's gotten pushed. And so we've got a meeting coming up in what, just another week? So we'll have an update for you next time. And really, that's all I have right now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, nothing to add to the task force on the School for the Deaf?
I think my colleagues covered it well. There, there's a lot to add. There are notes that still need to be reviewed. We've got some staff here at KSDE that was also involved in that. So I imagine that we will probably be asking for an agenda item on a future meeting.
Yes.
So that we can go through all of that.
Thank you.
Because it's a much larger conversation.
Want to make sure we have a, yes, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
For my part with the NASB, honestly, I walked away feeling pretty good about what we're doing in Kansas. I mean, I really did. I feel like we are on the forefront of a lot of things that are going to, and are shifting. And I think we've heard some really good things this board meeting that tell us there are things that are working in our state. And we need to make sure we're, yes, work to be done, but we have successes. And so we need to keep a balance in, in all of that. But I mean, I, I truly walked away. And what I love about education is you can be on political sides way over here, but you can have a solid education conversation that you can be fully on the same page. Ron from Montana was amazing. And it was obvious, if we were going to talk politics, we would have gone sideways. But we talked education and we were on that same path. So it's, that's what I love about education. It, it should not be political. It is, it's education. So let's, let's keep it where it belongs. And I just thought it was really great to have some really good side conversations with some other state board members in different states. And they're all very, very different in reality. I think Colorado might be one of our closest, but it's how, how we're made up and things. But it, it really was good. It was a lot. We were having that conversation about needing a little mental breaks a little more often in the constant sessions, but it, it was good. And then, of course, our board attorney was there as well. And so we had some good barbecue one evening and that was fun too. Beyond that, as far as I guess what I would call it, and remember that if you have anything in your district you want to highlight, as soon as I find my notes, please know that that is also what this time is for. And Kathy has lost her notes. So remember that literacy day at the Capitol is January 20th. Please keep that on your schedule if you can in any way come to that. Seriously cannot bear it. There they are, do with my notes. So please keep that date on your calendar free if you, if there's any way you can be here. There is planning going on and I hope to get geared into that closer bit. Just want to keep reminding us. And I want to highlight that I had a couple of parents, a couple of moms reach out to me. They had connected with Phillips Fundamental Learning Center and worked with their superintendent, they're in Garden City Superintendent Josh Gaiman, who I think is great as well. And they put on a dyslexia symposium this past Saturday. They had 105 educators attend this simulation. I think it was a PD for them, I think, in the process. And then they had an afternoon session for community for parents and they had 50 who came in for that. So I just, I, I just encouraged these moms that this is what we need. We need parents fully engaged, fully involved, doing whatever is possible to be done to do better. So we can all work it together because it is not just the teachers and not just administrators. It is all of us working this together. And I just, I told them I was going to highlight them and they had done a little survey and, you know, just everybody was very engaged and it, it sounded like it, unfortunately, I could not force myself to make that drive on Saturday. But it was really, really good to hear from them and to hear what they have going on. So, and I invited them to the literacy day at the Capitol. So hopefully we'll just get a lot of parents there as well and see a big push from us across the state. I think, I think that's about it. Do we have any future agenda requests? Mr. Porter?
I try to be brief, this is going to be difficult. The person that was here yesterday talking about ABA was here at my request because of relationships I have with the Disability Rights Center. And typically, what happens, if the board does not act, they go to the legislature. And I'm going to give you two examples. One of the first assignments I had was the Emergency Safety Intervention Task Force. The people that were concerned about that had come, this is before anybody here's time, even the commissioners. So, you know, I'm not blaming anybody here. But what had happened was they had come and made presentations to the State Board of Education several times over a period of years. And, and the board had listened politely and didn't move. And so that became an issue that involved the legislature. Unfortunately, we were able to build relationships and work together and do some things and, and solve that problem. The first meeting of the Dyslexia Task Force, I asked the people that were there, why haven't you come to the State Board of Education? The answer was, we did several years ago, not even before my time. We had what I considered a reasonable request for us to at least look at something from this, from Kevin yesterday. I did, I had not met Kevin, but I'd worked through the Disability Rights Center to do We don't know the whole story.
Right.
And we won't know the whole story until we ask the questions. But I would certainly like for us to find a way to pursue that. Because if we are having barriers to the, to students not getting the services that they need, we need to address that in such a way that it is reasonable for both the, the school and the student, student first. And so I would like for us to, I would actually like for us to pursue that aggressively. And as one other thing, we keep hearing about during, during open forum, we hear about technology. We hear a story, but we don't hear the whole story. And when we hear things like kids are, boys are spending the day doing their, you know, playing games, that may be true. But that, that is likely not universal. We're hearing a side of the story. And when we hear those and we do not respond, it looks like we're agreeing that every school, it's, in my view, it's another attack on teachers to say, okay, everybody's doing this job badly. We need to hear what actually is happening in schools. Now, I was pleased yesterday when I found out that they don't have kindergarten one to one. You know, that, that.
Hundred percent.
That, I am not necessarily concerned with what you said yesterday about the legislature banning cell phones. I'm not, I think that, as I indicated yesterday, we need to actually know what's going on and not just taking one perspective. And so that's, that's bothered me since the first time that was brought up, even though I don't disagree with what was being said, you know. I think that we're hearing one side of the story and we are not listening to the people that are actually in the trenches. And I encourage us to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other future agenda item requests? No, no response. We're not going to have a discussion if you have a request.
That's what I.
Okay, no, that's good. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
On a future agenda item.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would like us to ask Dr. Curtis to come back on a future agenda item for the screening. We had a, a good, robust conversation as far as dyslexic and got a little bit of information, trying to understand the distinction between screening and evaluation. And I under, I know or heard a little bit about how the screening occurs, but the evaluation process, how expensive that is, and ways that we could look at providing or making a way for the evaluation to occur within the, the schools. I think that it's important for us to understand, first of all, what the distinction is. We make, we vote on things without really understanding the depth of what's involved and what districts are going through. So if we could do that at some point.
Are you being specific about dyslexia? Because I'm.
Yes, I'm talking about, yeah, the screening and the evaluation for that, that process and understanding the distinction, which probably will open the door for other conversations. But I think that's a good starting point. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Debbie, did you have a future agenda item?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. Actually, dealing with the agenda, what I went back over the last agenda requests for months now. And I would say the large majority of them never make it on the agenda. And I thought it might be something the board might want to consider is that we make a good habit of voting on these agenda request items to ensure that they end up on the agenda. And I would further state that if, especially like if, like when Connie asked for that, the review on CR3T, I, I don't even really understand what that is. But she may have a person who can speak to that. So we, we have to fall back on the Department of Education staff to present on these things. But the board member who asks for something on the agenda may very well have somebody to speak to it that is bringing a problem so that we're not just politely hearing, but actually actively being involved in these subjects.
Many times, those things can be easily handled through Friday notes, which is what the commissioner does as often as possible. Because there's simply no way to bring every single thing before the board during our meetings. And with the adoption of our board goals, we are working hard to stay in a format that makes sense with those goals and those fundamentals. So my, my memory serves that there was information put out about what Connie asked about. And if there is a particular topic that was. if there is a particular topic that we have missed, and you want to bring that one up to ensure that we get it on it, then please do. But the broad general statement isn't helping me at the moment, but if there's something in particular, but often, and the commissioner said it in that meeting when she said that, that he will make sure there's information put out in the Friday notes for us. We just cannot bring every, everything to a board meeting. It's just completely impossible. So, when we can, just get information, then that's what we have to do.
Madam Chair, I'd ask you to look at 1010 EC, just to review that, just because futures for, requests for future agenda items. If there is pushback that we don't have time or something, it should be something that the board votes on. It does ask for the board to vote on things that you don't want on the agenda, because you think it should be handled elsewhere in Friday notes or whatever.
Understood. Thank you. We need to now go into, oh, I'm so sorry. So sorry, Dennis, go ahead.
Okay, I'll try to make this short, but it's really important. We got 250-year celebration coming up next year, amazing country. And I was just blessed to meet a man here four or five months ago who produces those flags, and I didn't realize how much history there was behind that. So, you have a two-page handout here for you to look at. What I'm asking for is for us to consider writing a resolution next month, putting this on the agenda, to just have a short presentation. I think Rudolph, AKA Randy, I think he'll come. He lives in Wichita, and he produces those. I think he would come and just give us a personal history about it. But he's asking that we do a resolution and send it to the governor's office, because she, that office, I guess, has already given indication that she would write a proclamation to the state over, for a flag to be placed in every school, and it would be privately funded, as I understand it. So, we wouldn't be asking the legislature for any money. And she said, Randy's actually asking just that we would agree that that would be a good thing for every school building to have one of those in. We've got 5,000 kids that have some visual impairment, and it just ties them in with the whole idea of celebrating our 250th, our semi-quinsentennial. Semi-quinsentennial. And so, if you can just be prepared, I'll work with Deborah, and she'll help me edit a resolution, I think, and you just simply want your signature, and then we'll let him carry that to the governor's office. And he's trying to get some legislation, or some legislators to back it.
To back it up.
We talked to some, just a good idea, and you can see how nicely well-done they are, so.
Great. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I don't, I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to skip people. Okay. Well, I think we now need to have our motion to go into executive session. Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, Deborah. Board travel. Hopefully, you've had a moment to look at that in your packet.
Madam Chair, I have an addition.
Yes.
I have a December Education Commission of the States meeting in Orlando that I'll be traveling to, and the expense to the board is very minimal. It's part of an airline ticket, otherwise it is paid for.
Okay, all right. Any other board travel comments? Okay. Yeah, she's good at staying on top of those. Okay. If I could have a motion to approve? Jim, second. Melanie, all in favor? 10-0, okay. Thank you. And now, Mr. Vice Chair.
I'm going to, that the Kansas State Board of Education recess into executive session to discuss the subject of reviewing RFP, request for proposal, responses for a commissioner search firm, which is justified pursuant to the exception for matters which will be deemed privileged under coma, in order to discuss personal matters on non-elected personnel, to B, to consult with attorney or reference attorney-client privileged communication, C, to discuss employer-employee negotiation, D, to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of bidders. Only those persons who have executed a nondisclosure document may participate in the executive session. All board members have executed this document, along with Board Attorney Mark Ferguson and KSDE Financial Department Director John Hess. The session will begin at, do you want to take, anybody need to take a break before we go?
Yeah, let's give it five minutes.
Okay, so, the session will start at 11:20 a.m. For 120 minutes. Well, it says minutes. If, no action will be taken place during this session, and an open meeting will resume at the board at 1:20 p.m. All board members, Mr. Ferguson and Mr. Hess are invited to participate in the executive session.
Second. All in favor? 10-0 vote, okay.
And I think it's been discussed, but can I just remind, you're not taking computers back there, you're not taking cell phones, so no technology, so we'll just be able to distribute those to review, and then they'll be gathered when you're finished.
Right, thank you. Absolutely. Okay.
Okay, we are back from our executive session. We do have action to take, so I believe our vice chair is going to read that motion. And then we, after that, don't run too fast, we need to have a really quick conversation. Okay, go.
Okay. It is moved that the technical evaluation for the commissioner search for the firm RFP be submitted to the Office of Procurement and contracts with the following evaluation of each bid. Bid A, highly likely to meet the scope of work in the RFP and bidder has extensive experience leading successful national searches for chief executive officer of public agencies, private nonprofit organizations or private business organization. B, highly likely to meet the scope of work in the RFP and the bidder has moderate experience. C, highly likely to meet the scope of work in the RFP and the bidder has extensive experience. D, highly likely to meet the scope of work in the RFP and the bidder has extensive experience. moderately likely. E, moderately likely to meet the scope of work in the RFP and the bidder has extensive experience.
May I have a second? Dennis, all in favor of this? That would be a nine zero vote because we are missing Betty Arnold. Okay. Really quickly, thank you for that, it was a great executive session, conversation. We need to, we should have, from everything we're hearing, everything back as the rest of the story for the financials. We, in talking, I and Danny would really like to do it in person. Is everybody able to come Tuesday afternoon for an in-person?
I don't think so.
When do you have it? Evening? Don't you do it noon?
If, we just need to be there, it starts at 3:45, so if we were done here by 2:45, we could get to school.
Okay, so time-wise, could we start at noon? To make sure we are done within that two and a half hour range? There's no way you can make that meeting because all of our packet information, I mean, we need to physically be present to have all that information available to us.
Next Tuesday.
Uh-huh.
No, I cannot. I, I have to, you understand, I have to coordinate care for my aunt.
And I need you to understand, this is something that could continue to happen with this commissioner search, like this is, this-
I understand, but we have the capability of zooming in, correct? Like you-
Well, in this particular one, because of the amount of paperwork and the process of the whole thing, that is very difficult to maintain what we have to-
Do I have a chance to work on care? I don't, I mean-
Okay, can, will you be willing to work on care to try to be here on Tuesday at noon? That would be wonderful. Thank you. Okay? And then obviously we'll talk to Betty, but that is our hope, to do a Tuesday at noon special meeting, it will also be executive session with a possible vote afterwards for that. Okay? Okay. Thank you.
Tuesday at noon.
Tuesday at noon. And we'll have more information coming as we get that lined out, okay? We will adjourn our meeting for today. Thank you. And next month will be December, I want to say ninth and tenth. Okay? Thank you.